Okay. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to tonight's meeting of the Ridgecrest City Council. This is a special meeting we've had to call in order to move along certain business items for the city. If I can ask to begin the meeting by roll call?
Mayor Bruin?
Here.
Mr. Blades?
Present.
Mr. Rajaratnam?
Present.
Mr. Gorman?
Present.
We have four present. Mr. Hayman is absent. We do have a quorum.
Fantastic. So if I could go ahead and ask everyone to, first, we have approval of the agenda as it's presented. Do I have any changes to the agenda?
No.
Hearing none, do I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and second. Roll call.
Mayor Bruin?
Aye.
Mr. Blades?
Aye.
Mr. Rajaratnam?
Aye.
Mr. Gorman?
Aye.
Four ayes, motion carries.
Great. If we can go ahead and begin with our pledge of allegiance, we're going to ask our city manager to lead us in the pledge.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Councilor Rajaratnam?
Please join me in prayer. Lord, thank you for giving us this day. Thank you for this little town of Ridgecrest where we live, we cherish, and we enjoy our lives here, Lord. Lord, as we have celebrated Independence Day last week, Lord, Lord, thank you for the freedom you have given to us, the freedom of religion, the freedom of speech, the freedom of movement. Lord, guide us that we should use that freedom to glorify you and for the betterment of this country, Lord. Pray for the leadership and pray for our city leadership, city managers, city staff. Lord, thank you for all the hard work they do. Bless each one of us here today. And I ask this in the precious name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Okay, our first item today is our consent calendar. We have, all items listed on the consent are considered to be routine and non-controversial by city staff. Consent items may be approved by one motion if no member of the city council or audience wishes to comment or ask questions. If comment or discussion is desired by anyone, then it will be removed from the consent calendar and be considered in listed sequence with an opportunity for any member of the public to address the city council. Our one item is proposed action to approve draft minutes of the Ridgecrest City Council regular meeting dated June 21st, 2023. Does any member of the council wish to have an item pulled? Hearing none, does any member of the public wish to have an item pulled? Hearing none, do I have a motion for approval of the consent calendar as presented?
I make a motion.
I second the motion.
I have a motion and second. Roll call.
Mayor Bruin?
Aye.
Mr. Blades?
Aye.
Mr. Rajaratnam?
Aye.
Mr. Gorman?
Aye.
Four ayes, motion carries.
Okay, we'll begin our regular discussion items which required this special meeting. We have seven discussion items because our Public Works Department decided to have seven different needs all at the same time. Item number one is a resolution of the City of Ridgecrest approving contract change orders number one and number two and quantity adjustments through June 2nd, 2023 in the amount of $750,000 with the contractor Griffith Construction set adjustments for time and material work, contract additions, and work added to facilitate a complete project and authorize the city manager to sign said change orders. Mr. Reed?
So this is our paving project, as you guys were all aware. At the beginning, when we awarded this project, we cut a bunch of money off the project to keep it under our budget. With the completion of Franklin and, what was the other one, Chip Seal and some of the other projects, we decided to add some of that back in because we saw savings on those projects. So this is me coming back to you, asking to put that money back on this project so that way I can spend it. And with that, if you guys have any questions, the majority of the work is a lot of concrete repairs which have been done to date, and then we're also adding back in two streets for paving. And we added some additional curb and gutter on that street. And we've, like I said, it's, we're facilitating a complete project, and we want to make sure that we fix all the things that needed to be fixed, and we don't leave something undone.
Okay. Now, just to clarify, Mr. Reed, is that generally same cause or reason for coming before council apply to any of the other items that we're looking at today?
Yes. So some of these are going to be, this is the only one for Griffith and for that project, but you have other ones for Ward Avenue, which obviously when we dig in the ground for pipelines that are 50-plus years old, you run into things that you would not expect to run into. So we have some other change order item work that we need to cover costs of things that we didn't expect to run into. And when you go to force account style work on these, because there was no bid items to quantify them, I can't pay the contractor anything until we have the work done and until we know what that cost is going to be. And we've gone back and forth because as anybody could understand, the contractor would like to get paid for everything, but we have a contract that says what items are payable and what items are not. So it takes some time. So the reason, like I said, the reason why we've called this special meeting is so now that we have agreed to the sum with the contractor is so that we can pay some of these items.
And that would be items, so the items two, three, six, seven, and eight, I believe, are similar in all being small amendments to the amounts. Is that correct?
So yes, item two and three are project-related. Items four and five are approving local matches.
Yeah, four and five is separate. They're not amendments.
Yes, correct. And then six, seven, and eight are obviously when we have any increases to a project, you have time increases which then require increases for our inspection services.
I was just clarifying, for the sake of the council, that those, how they're going to look in terms of?
Correct.
How we can go through. I have no other questions. This, I understand that nothing for $750,000 should sound routine, but this sounds routine. I apologize. I don't want the public to have fun with that one, but, you know, these are, these are all projects that we all knew we were working on, and this is simply making the necessary resolution changes so that the people doing the work for us can get paid.
That's exactly what it is. And like I said, I spoke numerous times that after we saw where we were with Measure V revenues and stuff like that, that we were trying to add the work that we had already designed back in that we pulled out. So I'm good.
Okay. Mr. Gorman, do you have any questions?
No questions. I think each of these line items have associated with them. A group of poor rascals wearing colorful vests and hard hats and standing out in the middle of the noonday sun and working a few pounds off at each day. Oh, God bless them. I wish we could give them a tip by way of this venue. And if indeed one of these projects backhoes dig up the body of, say, Jimmy Hoffa and it costs a little more, I completely understand.
Yeah. And that's pretty much what we did on one of them. We dug up everything you could imagine.
Okay. Mr. Blades? I just, I go from one, oh, no, that's right. I went some, some, I'm going to go right ahead and end up here. I was just.
Just a simple question, from my knowledge. So we are adding considerable amounts, $750,000. So don't we need to have contingency on top of that?
So I have contingency built into the project already. We have a 5% contingency built into it. What I'm asking for right now are the ones, they're literally the amounts that we had in separate bid schedules that we cut out of the contract. I'm adding those items back in. So I don't feel we need to add any more contingency to this project because I still have the contingency from the beginning. So this is.
Technically, I mean, it should be on the whole project, right, in general?
Correct. So technically, for namesake, if I was bringing this to you as a typical project again, I would bring it to you with a $75,000 contingency on top of it.
But you feel this amount, everything would be sufficient to complete the work?
Correct. I feel that this is a safe amount for the amount of work that I added back into the contract.
Thank you, sir.
So we had briefed the community, I think, on the onset of these projects, that we were, we as a new, were drawing down Measure V reserves close to zero. And I'm guessing that what you're now saying, I believe I already have the answer, I'm just asking you to explain it that way. We're in keeping with what we've already told the public. And that is that we estimated that Measure V would be drawn down close to zero. You pulled some things out, and now you're just adding them back in, but it isn't, but we will still likely see that close to zero line in the sand.
I agree. Depending on what the revenues were and based on what we budgeted, I can't tell you that it's going to be right at zero, but I'm going to say it's not going to be $7 million in reserves. I can tell you that.
I think, I think even when you briefed it, it was close. It was like within 50K or something close.
That's what we shot for with the original budget until we saw our projections and where our other two projects were. Because I didn't want to get, get out and get us in a pickle where we didn't have the money to pay for work that we had done, right? So.
Gotcha.
I would, I would let you know, Measure V is running just slightly over generally on terms of fiscal year returns as of June 30, but I know that the goal is still the same.
Gotcha.
Yeah, the intent was there.
That's all I wanted to hear. That's what we had briefed the public. I want to make sure that we were in keeping with what we stated. Okay. Thank you. That's all I have.
Okay. I have no other questions. Does any member of the public have any questions? Okay, bring it back. I'm assuming there's no other questions from council. Do I have a motion for the approval of the resolution for item number two?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion. I have a second. Roll call.
Mayor Bruin?
Aye.
Mr. Blades?
Aye.
Mr. Rajaratnam?
Aye.
Mr. Gorman?
Aye.
Four ayes, motion carries.
Okay. Our next item is item number three. This is a resolution of the City of Ridgecrest approving contract change orders number one and two and quantity adjustments through June 20th, 2023 in the amount of $775,000 with contractor ever, ever level holdings. So adjustments are for time, material work, contract additions, and work added to facilitate a complete project and authorize the city manager to sign said change orders. Mr. Reed?
So again, this is for work that we had to go to force account on, not as much contract work that we pulled out. This is more of, we dug in an area that was 50 years old and 18 feet deep, and we found a bunch of things that we didn't know existed. We found old lines from pump stations. We found Jimmy Hoffa's body. We found abandoned manholes. We found overpoured bases. So we found a lot of things that required some extra work that we did not have the ability to quantify with bid items. Thus, when you go to force account, like I said before, we have to have the total ticket before we can bill for it. So they've been fronting the overhead on this for now, I'm going to say, over three and a half months. So now that we have the ability to get them paid, that's what I'm here asking for, so we can pay them for the extra work that they have done.
Okay. And Mr. Reed, again, this, these are funds to complete a project. I understand the difference between the previous resolution, which we just looked at. This is from the wastewater enterprise fund.
Correct.
So this is directly related to the sewer and sewer fixings that were required on West Ward, correct?
Yep. Hundred percent.
I have no further questions, Mr. Gorman. Mr. Rajaratnam?
None.
Mr. Blades? Seeing no questions. Is there any questions from the public? Seeing none. We'll go ahead and bring it back to council. Hearing no further questions. Do I have a motion for approval of item number three?
So moved.
As presented. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and second. Roll call.
Mayor Bruin?
Aye.
Mr. Blades?
Aye.
Mr. Rajaratnam?
Aye.
Mr. Gorman?
Aye.
Four ayes, motion carries.
Okay. Item number four is a resolution of the Ridgecrest City Council approving the application for funds for the fiscal year '24, '25, fiscal year '25, '26 congestion mitigation air quality program and our carbon reduction program for the procurement of two new transit vans, committing the necessary local matching funds and assuring the completion of the project. Mr. Reed?
So this is a good one. This is me asking you to fund 11.47% of the money that we are asking for to replace two Ford F-350 vans that are severely out of their useful life and past their mileage that they should be being run. So it's a grant that covers 88.53%. And what we are doing is that we are guaranteeing, if we are awarded that grant, that we will fund from general fund, from transit funds, from wherever it is, that we will fund the difference.
And anything else?
No. It's like I said, we're not, we're not obligating any funds right now. All we're doing is saying that if we are awarded the grant, we will fund the $59,000 and change for these two vehicles.
Great. Let me just, a couple clarifying questions really quickly. The first is, for the public record, these are electric vans, correct?
Fully electric because we are putting up fast chargers and solar shade right now at the corp yard. So we want to make sure that we have something that can utilize the loads for the new project that we're doing, which was also a C-MAT grant that we got two years ago.
And important notice for the public, just in terms of understanding, is we're looking at federal grants and funding that's going to cover 88% of this total. We're making up the difference, but assuming there was not grants or other funds available, these units are now, I mean, it looks like it was.
They're over 500 grand.
There is over 500 grand for a, for two buses in order to have the electric bus. Just to put that on the record for any citizens that are not aware of the extraordinary increase in cost that the cities and township will be continuing to face as we get further, further along electronic vehicle implementation. And we do have the infrastructure in place to support it.
We will, by the time these buses will have, when we're awarded, if we get awarded this grant, the earliest we can have all the paperwork and have everything in to put it in for the bus would be '24, '25, but then the build process is over a year long. So they wouldn't be delivered until '25, '26, which is more than enough time for us to complete the project that we are currently under construction with.
And then for clarification, is this a competitive grant in which we're competing against other organizations, or is this very similar to, like, community redevelopment funds or something like that where we are still required to apply it and to guarantee that we will provide our matching dollars? Or is it, is this something that this is, we know this is going to happen, or are we in competition?
This is an in-competition grant. This is not a fair share style grant.
And what is our, what's our secret sauce that makes us think we stand a better chance or less a chance than others, or do we don't, it's just random?
Because we're pushing into the program that not very many people have the ability in our region to apply for. Most transit operations locally are done by, like, a regional transit company.
Like Kern or something.
They, they farm it out to Golden Empire Transit or things like that. So we're very rare in the sense that we run our own transit community. So we have a good shot, just because I don't think you'll see very many from our region that are going to apply for a carbon reducing side of the congestion mitigation air quality grant.
And just finally, again, for the record, this is essentially, we're getting two new $250,000 transit vans that are, we need for our transit program at roughly the cost of a used vehicle.
Yes.
Sounds great to me. Okay. Mr. Gorman? No questions? Mr. Rajaratnam?
Mr. Reed, again, from my knowledge, what is the sanctity of this percentage, 11.47 matching grant? So is that said that way?
I'm sorry, 7.4.
The matching grant, we said 11.47%.
So that's, that's the grant guidelines. The program is not 100% like Clean California was. So this is a 88% federal grant. What they want to do is they want to make sure that the cities or the people applying have some skin in the game for maintenance purposes and for things like that. And that's really my take. So it's, it's, that's what it boils down to. That's the percentages that their, the grant guidelines say that they will fund up to. So you have to give them your best cost estimate, and then they say, okay, we'll fund 88.53% of this. You guys have to pick up this 11% and any overage. So CPI, right? We might have to cover the CPI. If it goes up 10%, we could have another 10% that we have to cover. So, but that's the most that they will fund up to.
So it's a percentage break now? Because for the next request also, it has the same breakdown, so.
Correct. Based out of the, of the federal, these two projects have the same percentage breakdowns where Clean California is a state grant, HSIP was a state grant. Those are all 100% funded grants.
Thank you, sir.
Do they have to be forwards?
They don't have to be forwards, but they are in line with the rest of our fleet. Let's just say that. And they, they had the best range for bang for the buck.
Hey, thanks for, thanks for going for the grant. So if the public's unaware, just a quick plug for Travis. Our Public Works Department always goes above and beyond on every grant they can possibly get their hands on. Very, I mean, the last current cog meeting, Aaron was giving us a big kudos, especially to you, just how hard you go to get a hold of this grant money at every turn. So I appreciate you, you going the extra mile. Thanks, Travis.
Absolutely.
Okay. Is there any public comment? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to council.
I've got one public comment. The, the math for this, that you have to do for the carbon reduction, probably some of the most brutal math that I've ever had to figure out in my life.
I believe that. I.
I absolutely believe that.
It was so, I was like, like, this is braille.
There's just no question that it has to have been brutal.
I have, I have one question, and that is, since this is coming out of the general fund, I should have asked this before. Is the city manager okay with this?
I think so.
I'm pretty sure.
I'm pretty sure I talked to him at least once or twice about it.
Yes. I mean, you're, you're talking, this is excess transit funds. So if it doesn't go to streets, it'll go towards this.
Yeah.
Sounds good. Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve item number four.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and second. Roll call.
I think he's going to let you guys do it all night.
Who?
Skip.
Skip is going to let you guys do it.
He's just sitting there grinning. Mayor Bruin?
Aye.
Mr. Blades?
Aye.
Mr. Rajaratnam?
Aye.
Mr. Gorman?
Aye.
Four ayes, motion carries.
Okay, we are on to item number five. Item number five is a resolution of the Ridgecrest City Council approving the application for funds for the fiscal year '24, '25 and fiscal year '25, '26 Regional Surface Transportation Program, RSTP, and Highway Infrastructure Program under the Moving Ahead for Progress in the 21st Century for the South Mahan Street Resurfacing Drainage and Intersection Rehabilitation between West Bowman and West Dolphin. Mr. Reed?
So this is our every-two-year RSTP application. This, as we spoke about earlier, is a fair share grant. The most that we can get for this grant is $774,000. So there will be a decent chunk that we would have to front for this to match, to make up for it. But again, all we are doing right now is presenting a project to get in on the federal transportation plan, so that way it becomes eligible for the use of the money. So we're guaranteeing that we will pay the 11.47% of the project that we have, and then obviously we're going to have to cover any difference that it goes over. And we've made it a habit of doing about half miles of street, so this will be the first of two Mahan projects.
Okay, so you're going to have to go back and clarify your 700,000 number. The way you write, the way you rattled it sounds like, and I'm just making sure that you understand how I heard it, was, we're putting it in for 1.6. We know we can't get more than 700, which means that we're on the hook for 900 more plus the 216. And I just want to make sure you hear what is being heard on this side of the table.
Yeah, we're on the hook for about 900 of it if we do the project as I have it cost estimated today. But again, we are not obligating any money. All we are doing is, we are saying that we will fund the local match, and I have to have this resolution saying council will allow me to apply for the grant.
Okay. I just want to make sure that we're clear about what we're approving and why, and what were the reasons behind it. Okay?
Yeah, I think staff's understanding is, is that Mahan Street is one of the priority streets for the council, and getting this paid for in part through a grant is always beneficial than us paying for 100% out of Measure V is our thought.
We agree. Or I agree personally, I should say. I just want to make sure that it was clarified because when you say that 700,000, the miscommunication or understanding could be that we are actually agreeing to the full funding. We would have another project approval at some point down the line that would approve the whole project.
Correct. It'll break it down.
With, with the grant money, with our fair share, with all the, the, yada, yada, yada. Okay. With that, I have no other questions. And I happen to just want to reiterate again what city manager said, that Mahan is a priority for the council. I believe it is. So, okay. Mr. Gorman?
Just a question. I traverse Mahan twice a day, going to my shop and back. Is this, when you say Mahan, is it any specific part of Mahan?
Yeah, so that we're going to work from, it's the, the ultimate goal is to make it passable for two vehicles between Bowman and Springer. This will be the first phase of that, that we will work from Bowman to Dolphin, and then phase two would be from Dolphin to Springer. Now, I'm going to design both phases under one phase, so I have a shovel-ready set of plans, so that way if somebody can't deliver a grant project, we might be able to swoop in and take that money.
Hot dog. Thank you. Keep Mahan in your heart. It's a street that could stand some improvement.
Just a little, huh?
Yeah.
Mr. Rajaratnam?
No, I don't have any.
Mr. Blades?
I'm good.
Good. Okay. Is there any public comment? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to council. Do I have a motion for approval of item number five, approving the resolution for the Regional Surface Transportation Program?
I make a motion.
Motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and second. Roll call.
Mayor Bruin?
Aye.
Mr. Blades?
Aye.
Mr. Rajaratnam?
Aye.
Mr. Gorman?
Aye.
Four ayes, motion carries.
Okay, next item is item number six. Item number six is a resolution to amend a professional services agreement with Wildon Engineering in the amount of $17,262 to include the repair of existing concrete, traffic loop, and asphalt improvements in the capital improvement plan, phase two, and the engineer's report. Mr. Reed?
So this is our phase-two sewer project that is currently underway. This is an amendment that we finally, I've been sitting on for a while, and I hadn't just, kind of ones that got lost in the weed. And since I had you guys all here for a special meeting, I figured I'd get my money's worth out of you.
Yep.
Literally.
United.
Literally.
He's going to throw a measly 17 in there.
So this is, this was our phase-two sewer project after we had conversations with Caltrans, and we looked at where the location of the sewer line is. We saw how deep it was going to be. We realized that there was going to be tons of asphalt we were going to be taking out, the tracks from the excavator were going to be on sidewalks, and that we needed to plan for the repairs for this so we didn't get nickel and dimed with change orders. So that is what this is approving. This is approving money for work that they did for our set of plans way back when for the Caltrans side of things that I finally got the amendment request for. Was that, because we already approved amendment one, this is amendment two? Correct. We approved amendment one was when we changed them, because I got the grade four, grade five list in the report, and I wanted to actually be able to have a program that we could work on our sewers. And we could have done one pro, one project and literally fixed the grade fours and grade fives, and that's not really a capital improvement plan to keep updating our system. So you guys did approve a previous amendment, and I believe it was for $11,000 to add in the threes, if I remember right, or so?
It was 11,578. And if I'm correct, that's, if I, if I'm correct, that was a 2020 resolution. Is that correct? Rick, am I reading that properly? It says Resolution 2020-48.
I think Resolution 2020-48 was the original project.
Was that the original project? Okay.
2262.
Was the amendment.
Was the amendment. Yeah. 2020 was the one that approved Wildon to do the report and to do the, the project design.
Correct. Okay. Okay. I don't have any specific questions. I was trying to reach for, you know, how many of these are things that, you know, came after you started, you know, on your, on your role, and that's why I thought it was a 2020 resolution on the amendment.
This, this one, this one was more after we thought about how it was going to be built when we were in the pre-bid meetings. That was when this came to fruition, when I started looking at locations and talking with contractors and figuring out what size machines they were going to have. That's what prompted us down this road.
Okay.
So.
I don't have any other questions. I know you guys are working your backsides off to get things done, so I'm not going to question it. Mr. Gorman? Mr. Rajaratnam?
One general question. So all these items could not wait till the 19th meeting?
So the two for the grants absolutely could not because they are, the grant is due the 17th.
Okay.
And then the two that have money attached to them for people, I had invoices that were sitting out there. I, I felt it was prudent that since I had you guys, I should do the things to be able to cut them the money that they have been carrying the overhead on for us for months. And then some of these other ones, I just said, well, while you're here.
Since we are having a meeting anyway.
Yeah, since we're having a meeting, I might as well get some stuff done.
Right. Good thinking. Thank you.
Okay, no questions.
I have a question, just, just a clarifying question for myself, which is, can, I'm guessing that a resolution like these where we're adding to the amendment, these cannot be consent calendared, is that correct?
They're considered routine business, but they have to be for discussion because we're approving funds.
Thank you. Just wanted to clarify that, that question.
But can I ask, Rick, and you would think that by year three, I would know this, but under.
I'm supposed to know this by year three too, so.
Yeah, but under a certain, I thought under a certain amount, the city manager. Yeah, but under a certain, I thought under a certain amount, the city manager can just-
He can, but then they wouldn't come to council, if they're under a certain amount.
Okay.
Yeah, these are a little bit greater than my amount.
Well, the, I mean, this one's not, but I think in the whole light of it, it is-
In the whole light of it, it's still good for public disclosure and-
And we're talking about the projects, these projects that you guys approved, big sums, and this is showing the backwork that requires this for all this stuff that we're doing.
I just was curious, I was, I was, because I was looking at those three going, aren't those just click, 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 but-
They seem like they were consent.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification. Is there any public comment? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to council. Do I have a motion for approval of item number six, a resolution to amend the professional services agreement with Wilden Engineering?
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, roll call.
Mayor Bruin.
Aye.
Mr. Blades.
Aye.
Mr. Roger Rotnum.
Aye.
Mr. Gorman.
Aye.
Four ayes, motion carries.
Next item is item number seven, this is a resolution to amend a professional services agreement with Wilden Engineering in the amount of $105,000 for the West Ward Phase One Improvement Project to include additional force account, force account inspection services and project subconsultant services. Mr. Reed.
So this is tacking on to the West Ward amendment that's saw for the construction side. Obviously, when we have a bunch of added work, you add contract days, contract days, added inspection time, this is so we can pay for the additional inspection time now that we have a final cost for this force account work. And within that inspection time, since we sub the construction management side, so as far as like documenting some middles, doing stuff, that we're still play a very active role in that, but we have somebody that helps document and all this stuff like this, they have, they run the subconsultant for compaction, for slump testing, for all the things we have to have on a grant project to prove that we use suitable materials. So they are also, that's also part of their contract.
Force account is when you find something, you gotta pay the premium for it.
Correct. Force account is when we don't have a way to quantify the type of work in the bid item, so we have to go to a time and material style work, and then we have to negotiate with them after that when they give us their, their bill.
This is, this is, this, this is, this is the big one for the 1950s and 60s road work. This one and the one that-
The 775 one.
The 775 one, yes. These are, these are the big swallows for the, the-
When concrete was cheap and they could overpour the bases.
Seventy years ago of work, yeah, okay.
Yep.
Got it, just, just saying out loud, so people can hear, this is, this is the, this is the ouch time for, for stuff that was done, you know, 60, 70 years ago, when there, you know, the city's infrastructure was dirt roads, so, you know, thank you for, for correcting stuff. And that helps explain a certain amount of when you hear forced, what that is, that's, you gotta make a decision on the fly, you got a big open hole, you can't stop and wait to bid it out 15 ways a Sunday in order to get the work done.
Yeah, and one of the other things out there is, it's, you get into sugar sand when you're down about four feet deep, so, what we ran into a lot was, is you would have an eight-foot box to shore, you're down 18 feet deep, but your base of your sewer, because concrete, concrete was so cheap back then, they just dug a big hole and let it slump, slough off, so they had a cavern the size of who knows how long, and they filled the bottom full of concrete to make their base. But now, when we have it shored, because there's road around you, if that base goes outside the shoring, how do I get the base out without digging along the outside and moving my shoring out?
And hurting your shoring.
Exactly. So you had to guess, do you wanna dig a 16-foot hole and pay 16 by 16 and pay for that upfront without knowing the base was overbuilt, or do you wanna take your chance? So that was kind of what we, the gambling game we were playing.
No, it's not so much gambling, because the only public thing we're gambling, but it's more, you never know what's underneath the ground when you're, when, when you're standing on top of the ground.
And that's what I was referring to as the gambling game, we don't know what's gonna be down there and where-
There's, there's certain areas of our town that we know that, you know, how it was built wasn't built to code or specifications 60, 70 years ago, and that leaves, you know, work to be fixed. Okay, I have no further questions. Mr. Gorman. Mr. Roger Rotnum. Mr. Blades. Is there any comment from the public? Seeing none, bring it back to council. Do I have a motion for approval of resolution of item number seven, to amend a professional services agreement with Wilden, in the amount of $105,000 for West Ward Phase One?
I make a motion. Second.
I have a motion and second, roll call.
Mayor Bruin.
Aye.
Mr. Blades.
Aye.
Mr. Roger Rotnum.
Aye.
Mr. Gorman.
Aye.
Four ayes, motion carries.
And finally, number eight, is a resolution to amend a professional services agreement with Wilden Engineering, the amount of $21,839 for the West Ward Phase Two Improvement Project to include additional design and survey efforts.
So this is the, we finally got billed for survey work that was done over two years ago. This is before we acquired all this stuff in-house to do all of our survey work in-house for our road projects. So this should be the last bill that you hear for additional survey for a road project, unless it's a giant survey that we have to do that I don't want Quinn walking for 17 days, but.
So, I'm gonna take this opportunity to compliment our staff and for the public to understand that we're, we're signing amendment for additional $21,000 for third-party services. This is just one example of where our staff is working hard to help manage our costs as a community. So Travis, thank you for, thank you for your staff's work in, in reducing this. I, I can't even begin to put a tangible number on what you've saved in terms of surveying costs. I can tell you that we're past budget, but I'd love at next year's budget meeting, for one of the slides, to be doing our own surveys to save this city X dollars.
Yep.
I'd love to know, and I'd love to be able to share that number with the public, that says, you know, when they say you don't need staff, or you don't need this, or you don't need that, and, and I can show how us having good staff, well-compensated staff, knowledgeable staff, has saved the city X dollars would be a lovely, lovely thing to be able to show them.
Well, just to, just to quantify it a little bit for you, this $21,000 was for three intersections to get surveyed 100 foot beyond the intersection, that's it.
So $7,000 in intersection.
Correct.
Times how many intersections I, I, I'm just saying, I'd love for you, even if you can't back it up to, to the cent, which is, I understand completely, but even throwing a ballpark out there that you said, I'm not gonna go high, I'm gonna go conservative, that's great, because the bottom line is, I know we're saving money by, by doing better work in-house, and I think what happens is, there's gonna be a moment in time where we're gonna be, well, do we pay that for this person? Do we keep that person? Do we make sure this is valuable? And I think we, we sometimes, we, we lack vision of understanding what good people do in terms of cost savings for organizations. Having more staff doesn't always mean you're paying more, having more staff means you're greater efficiency and you're also saving in how you're paying other people.
Correct.
And that's, this is proof of positive in that in many, many ways, so. I have no other comments other than compliment, love to see that we're saving money on our surveys in the future. Mr. Gorman.
Really, just a question, a million years ago, Ed Leckie and I surveyed parts of Ridgecrest, it was fun. These days, the survey crew is what, one guy and a spinning laser?
So, depends on what you're running. I still try to keep, if Quinn's gotta do a lot of survey where we're out in traffic, I try to stay out with him, because I want somebody watching traffic while he's walking across the road. But, to today's day and age, depending on what we wanna do, GPS can be done with one man, and we use a total station nowadays, which is electronic distance measurements and angular measurements, and they're robotic, so it tracks a prism that's got an infrared light that the total station can pick up and track. So it, it really is a, for topo and things like that, it's a one-person job. Doing boundary work is a little bit more than a one-person job, because you're usually digging for monuments and doing stuff like that, but, one to two people, and Ed Leckie is a great surveyor. Retraced a lot of maps of his.
He was, yes. We did it pulling a chain.
Yep.
Thanks. Absolutely.
Councilman Roger Rotnum?
No questions.
Mr. Blades?
No questions from me.
Okay, is there any comment from the public? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the, oh, he's flashing lights at me, okay. Seeing none, I'll bring it back to council. Do I have a motion for approval of the resolution to amend a professional services agreement with Wilden, in the amount of $21,000 for Ward Phase Two?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and second, roll call.
Mayor Bruin.
Aye.
Mr. Blades.
Aye.
Mr. Roger Rotnum.
Aye.
Mr. Gorman.
Aye.
Four ayes, motion carries.
That is probably the fastest we've gotten through, like, seven resolutions on record.
Thank you, guys, I appreciate it.
And thank you, and, and appreciate all the work that's being done. Next item on our agenda is our city manager report. City manager, anything?
Yeah, I only got one thing to add, we are moving that night on Balsam Street, from Balsam Street to City Hall, primarily because we're gonna have a 14-inch sewer pipe running down Balsam Street during that time, as well as routing traffic off of Charlie Boulevard onto Balsam, so.
As in Carmageddon and Nob, we're not matching.
Well, we were kinda hoping that Travis would be able to pull a rabbit out of his hat and, and delay the, the project a little bit, but that doesn't appear to, to be happening, so. So we're not gonna be having a night on Balsam, we'll be a night off Balsam, here at City Hall. There in the circle, so, should be fun.
And what's the date we're planning that?
Excuse me?
What's the date we're planning?
August 12th, between 7:00 PM and 11:00 PM.
It's gonna be later, 7 to 11.
Yeah, it'll be later.
Fantastic.
Yep. What's that?
No, we're in Ridgecrest, it'll be mild.
It'll be fine. If we get a good breeze, it'll be beautiful. Okay.
Mayor and city council comments, I'll go-
Let me know if I can help. They're always listening.
Start with Mr. Gorman.
Well, sorry, mayor and council comments, we'll go ahead and begin with Mr. Gorman.
Thank you. Let me see, the moon is gonna finally wane to not being, lighting up the sky and occluding the stars soon, and I think there's a star viewing party happening this coming Saturday, somewhere along Brown Road. That information's with more precision available on the internet somewhere, God help me. And I'm gonna go, i-if we're still in town, now we're leaving Saturday for a couple of weeks. I care about being able to see the stars, and if I may, in an otherwise mundane meeting, I can offer some icing on this cupcake of a meeting, by a Ridgecrest haiku that I came up with recently that touches upon the extent to which light pollution is taking away our sky, our very special sky. So twinkle, twinkle, little star, I sadly wonder where you are. In times past, you shined so bright, twinkling brightly in the night. Now you're dim amid the glare of brighter lights that fill the air. Our dark night skies are now aglow by lights beamed up from down below. Yes, downtown lights as years go by grow to fade our once-dark sky. And those old stars which urged the bard now shine unseen for rhyme's regard. One epic swath in our night sky now fades too as years go by. Yes, the Milky Way is fast-a-pace to also becoming lost in space. I offered that because I read somewhere that during our lifetimes, the Milky Way may not be visible to us, and that would be a bloody shame. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Roger Rotnum. I know, whatever I should, sorry about that.
Are you going to talk about fireworks?
I am.
Okay, I have none.
Okay.
Mr. Blades?
Again, express my appreciation for Travis, for you specifically, and all your hard work towards going after these grants. You're, you're going above and beyond your predecessors, I believe, from my experience, and I know that it is greatly benefiting the city. I, I think that Kern County alone performed well, well above most other counties in California in going out for grants, at least that's what's been reported at Kernacog, and I know you're a large portion of that, so I appreciate all your work.
Okay, I only have one fairly simple comment, but it's got a little bit of some teeth to it. I wanna thank everyone who came out on July 1st to the Desert Empire Fairgrounds for our 4th of July celebration, it was wonderful, it was a great night, I, there was 5,000 people out there. Thank you to this council, and thank you to our citizens for supporting the program and having them out there. It's one of my favorite nights every year, but bottom line is, there's no better night when you get to see community come out, and we got to see so many young people out there and so many families out there enjoying the Fourth. It was a beautiful finale, a great presentation, you can really tell that they're trying to create and invest in a great event for this community, so that we can always have safe community fireworks in our community. And so thank you to Chip Holloway, Scott Miller, Mike Birdwell, our city staff, everybody who worked together on that event. I'm looking forward to it next year. A small message to Mr. Holloway, who mentioned that it was the city's idea that we wanted to charge at the gate, and I appreciate his comments, because he said something, he said, "We only wanted, we only encourage that because we wanna see everything that, that we do have value." And value's such an important thing, we have, we wanna always value our time, our efforts, and everything we do in our community, and the more that we raise the value of how we perceive ourselves, the better we'll be as a community. And with that, I wanna talk about one other problematic value, and that's the value of our own sense of, our own individual freedoms always surpassing all others. And my specific point is about July 4th, and that was that on that day, I do believe that I saw a significant escalation in the number of aerial fireworks that were being set off in neighborhoods. Ladies and gentlemen, if you burn my house down because you want to have fireworks, I will sue you. Not because I don't like you, but because you have no right to be setting them off in neighborhoods. There's a reason we have a great fireworks celebration, there's a reason why people out in the county around Dirt do it, but when I am literally three, three houses away from a house, a firework, an aerial firework going off over someone's roof, we're getting too close and we're getting too cocky. And that's inappropriate language for something like this, but I wanna speak blank, I wanna speak directly. I understand and I appreciate the right to have fireworks, I love them, I bought $200 of them, me and my family sat out on the street, and we set them off, and we had a great time, and I loved every minute of it. But one firework almost went too high, and there's my kids running and scared, but can you imagine that you are sending something up into the air without any awareness, training, knowledge, compensation, and you're doing it in neighborhoods, where people's houses, garages, roofs, trees, all the above are. So what I wanna do is, I wanna ask this community, over the course of the next year, I want you to ask yourselves, what is it gonna take for our community to actually really have proper, safe fireworks? And what are steps are we gonna have to take as a council and as a community in the future to ensure that that's possible? I don't wanna see your freedoms impeded, I don't wanna see my freedoms impeded, I don't wanna see fireworks go away. We can keep taking things away, but all we do is take things away in order to make sure